We will go ahead and start, got everybody here, Councilmember Holt, Texas Morning said she has some other business to take care of.
And so she's going to check the video afterward.
Make you take your seat, build your nest.
Got my nest built, Mayor.
All right. So you're still building your nest? They're gonna start out this morning with our police department, and that is gonna be on page eleven in your expense report. And Councilmember Wallace wanted us to know that she is not driving, she is in the passenger seat. All right, Chief Corley.
All right, morning, Council.
Good morning.
Um, we've got our budget, uh, proposed, um, the large part of our, uh, budget is, is basically the same as last year's as far as line items. There are a couple of increases, um, particularly, uh, police admin, major crimes, and also in patrol, for professional services and, uh, what that is, is a, an increase in our technology, uh, fees for things like ShotSpotter and Fuses and our real-time crime, uh, camera systems and things like that, that were being paid by a grant over the last couple of years, and that grant runs out this June. And so, uh, we had to budget for the increases, uh, for those technologies. Other than that, excuse me?
What was that number of the total?
Okay, so in, in police admin, if you'll see the professional services line item there. Let's see if I can remember myself.
Fifty-six oh fifteen.
Page last one.
Page twelve, last one.
Okay.
Right. So, in admin, that increased, uh, hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Four seventy-five eight five. And again, in the patrol, police patrol professional services was three hundred thousand. It was increased by one hundred two thousand, and that's for ShotSpotter. And then in major crimes. Final here. Major crimes, professional services, no, it stayed the same, I'm sorry, that, that particular line item involves our flock cameras, which we adjusted last year during fiscal year because of the increase of cameras that we have to park and everything. And so that, that line item stays the same, it's, it's under our contract.
That's on page nineteen, Council.
Chief Corley, in, in regard to, uh, ShotSpotter, is, is that still one of the better tools you'll have available?
Yes, sir, the ShotSpotter is, is a, it's a great asset, uh, for us can, plus, uh, putting that together with our camera systems and our flock camera systems, when those, when the ShotSpotter alert, uh, goes off, it ob- obviously it alerts only, not only dispatch, but the officers on the scene in their car computers, it tells them where exactly it is. And we can use that data with the data of the cameras that are in the areas and the flock cameras in that area to try to locate a suspect very quickly. And so, uh, the other part of the ShotSpotter, um, benefit is, uh, sadly, there's times where, uh, a shot or shots have been fired and we don't get a nine-one-one call. We don't get a call from anyone in the area, but the, the, the detection alerts us to it and it puts us in the area. And we've actually found a victim with, with no one else calling before. So, uh, it does have some, some very, uh, very beneficial parts to it.
Do we have enough cameras out? I know we have a lot of cameras.
Right, um, the camera technology, uh, has been outstanding for us. Uh, we would always love to have some extra, um, because there are some areas where we would like to have some more cameras. Uh, they, they do get, you know, that's another expense. Sometimes, uh, we, we've been able to find, uh, some private, um, folks in the area, private, uh, businesses that, that help pay for some of the cameras because they're, they're in their area and they would like it. So that's helped, but, uh, yes, I, I, we would love to, to increase that as we go.
Chief, is there a, a critical need in your department that is not in this budget? Or may have even been proposed by you that may have been cut out of the budget?
A critical need? Our, our biggest assets are employees, um, and we're still, uh, a little short. But, um, we're, we're in the, in the process right now of hiring, we're, I think currently at two oh seven, uh, staffing. And, uh, we're in the process of hiring five and six next month. And so that'll put us around two thirteen, and then we do have, uh, one retirement in the next month. And, uh, we have, uh, one officer that's been hired by the TBI and another, to another agency. And so we'll be at two ten at the change of the fiscal year.
Still, still short, but still, I would say probably highest we've been.
Oh, absolutely, sir, absolutely, uh, we were around one eighty-two when, uh, about three years ago. And so two ten is, is amazing.
Patrol, awful.
Patrol, I'm sorry, we have about forty, uh, vehicles.
That's what I was gonna ask, this may take some time, but on each of like the gang unit, the war- police warrants, and then it says canine unit, all, can you have somebody break, because I'd like to know the, um, the employees in each of those areas? Like, how many are in the gang task force? How many are, so that way I can know?
Yes, we can do that, I can get that information.
Okay.
What's the magic number of, of officers that you need? And my, the reason I ask this question is so that we can get more people on street patrol to deal with some of the, the things that, I know I hear a lot about speeding, running red lights, hit and run.
Yes, so currently our authorized strength is two twenty-one. In, in, if I had a, a crystal ball, I could tell you what we need. This question was need, uh, with the, the growth of, uh, the city and the county and the, the area. And, uh, the service population keeps growing, uh, folks from other cities and counties around us coming here because of the growth we're having here, uh, for retail, for entertainment, and for work and those types of things. Because our service population is continuing to grow, that I would like to see, uh, an increase of about five or so per year for the next few years to get us more around two thirty-one or two thirty-five in the next, you know, you know, with all the, the growth that's coming in the next few years.
And you brought up a good point, that's important, we, we talk about per capita police officers. If you look at comparable city populations, we're on the high end, right? But fifty-two percent of our manufacturing workforce comes from outside of Madison County. We're at a hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand a day that are inside the city of Jackson. So we're not patrolling just for the folks that are sleeping in Jackson, we're patrolling for the folks that are here every day.
Absolutely, Chief, where are we, um, and I, I'll ask the, the fire department this as well. Where are we on, um, Officer Paving, I know we raised that, um, are, are we, where are we at there? Are we good? Do we need to increase that again? Because for me, if there's one, there's two things we overfund, it's gonna be roads and infrastructure, it's gonna be police. I wanna make sure that, I'd rather overfund than underfund those areas.
Right, uh, I think that what the council approved last year for increases, uh, for our salary state, uh, starting and, and, and the, the increases for our, uh, our veteran officers, uh, has put us right in where we should be at the moment. But again, um, with everything else that goes on, uh, I think, uh, that, that needs to continue to be looked at and over, and if we didn't put it in this fiscal year, we didn't come in and ask for another raise for this, I think we're okay. But I do think it would be something we would definitely need to look at probably for next year.
Okay.
Under the police patrol, um, you, you have the budget in for the amount of officers down you have.
I'm sorry now?
So, under the police, the patrol? So did you budget, already budget for the officers that you're gonna need to hire?
Yeah, so there's, there's five vacancies that are in the budget for this coming year. That's taking into consideration what we're about to hire in June, again, that's gonna put us around two ten. We also are anticipating around four retirements that have already, they're either because of mandatory retirements or have already told us we're gonna retire this, this coming fiscal year. So again, that's gonna put us around, you know, two ten plus another nine or so, that's gonna put us close to where we should be.
Tagging on Candace, what you said earlier about the, uh, this might be a nice thing question, but I'd like to see a total for the number of dollars we've spent over all accounts, because we've had to change accounts so much when he was in this thing. Also a total number of people, which we got two oh one, that should be easy. And then also the total number of cars, and also the amount of grant money we have. And if we could create grant money, and if we could go back and have at least one or two-year history so we can kind of see trends of what's happening overall, trying to pull at least apart, this part is just above me.
You said two, two years of history?
Three, as much as you can, two would be better than none, three would be perfect.
This shows a net increase right now of three point six million dollars over the previous total police budget, uh, budget.
I, I, I'm not gonna write all this down, just, just put it in paper. I could, I'll, tonight I'll look at it, I can't remember what you said right now.
But the nice thing is, we've given the increases to keep us from having problems that we will have to live with for a long, long time.
That's true, yes.
So, so now you have the, that figures, the total police, every department?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, good, this, I, I'll get that afterwards.
Yeah, and if, I can get that figured fairly quickly.
I wanna go back to patrol.
Yes.
At what point do we then, if, if we're gonna be right where you need to be, more people on the street dealing with running red lights and speeding? Because that is, that is such a problem.
Yes, so, uh, we just recently had, uh, M-TAS do us a staffing study. And they, after going through everything we had last year or so, uh, did come to the conclusion we're facing a threshold of, uh, if we, 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 we're going in that direction or we gain more calls for service that we were not gonna be able to be proactive in being like more traffic, more, uh, proactive criminal patrol type things. And so that's the reason why I would be asking for additional five, five in the five for the next few years, hopefully, to get that, you know, the manpower where we can be much more proactive.
Councilmember Wallace has a question, she's being polite and texting her announcement in before just buttoning in with the.
Thank you, good morning, Chief Corley.
Morning.
I have two questions, one is just a follow-up to what Candace asked. So we do have a bookmark, I call it a bookmark, for five additional police officers. And I heard that you did say we had four that's probably retiring. So I did just wanna make sure that we have the funds there for those additional five.
Yes, those who plan and budget, yes.
Okay, and then going back to earlier when you talked about the cameras, would you, for council and Mr. Mayor, give us how many cameras you feel would be really, really, like, if it's just one or two that you feel could be critical? And then maybe Brian with IT could give us the cost of that, so we can look that and compare it to the budget place.
Are you talking about locations, or are you talking about how many do I think we need?
You thought that you could use some additional cameras in some areas that you don't have them?
Yes, uh, I think that's gonna, most of the time when we place a camera somewhere, it's gonna be based on what's transpiring in that area. And so, looking at our stats, and so what we'd have to do is determine, uh, if there's a location where we do not have a camera and there's, uh, criminal activity or things like that going on in that area, that's where we do it. I, I, I'm just saying, there are probably some areas in, in town where we do not have a camera that we would like to have. But I would have to get.
That was my question, if it would be one or two in the areas that you feel like could be possibly critical? If you would let us know that number so we can know the cost, so we could compare that? Because that could be a place that we need to spend money and that would be good for the city.
Okay.
I think Chief, don't, don't, and cameras aren't, they don't operate by themselves, right? You gotta have somebody to watch them, and so if there's, we gotta keep that in mind too on costs associated with it. If we're adding cameras and we're adding screens and we're adding, we need to also look at, do we have adequate eyes to watch those screens?
Thank you, thank you.
Chief, you mentioned the, uh, the study that M, that, uh, who did it?
M-TAS, yes.
Yesterday they have a discussion about, uh, the study they're supposed to do with city court, and they haven't, they've been non-responsive. Who do you deal with at, at?
So, uh, M-TAS, they, they have, uh, specific consultants for police and police management, just as they do for fire management and other parts of city government. And so I directly, uh, met with the police consultant.
Yeah, they have, they have a consultant for everything, you know, they got one for police, court, city hall and all that. So it's different consultants. Any more questions on operating for Chief Corley?
I think you see that you're fully in support of whatever you need.
Yes, sir, and I, I, I really do appreciate the support of council, thank you.
And so, I had the number, I had the page. Six three? Page three. Page, yes, page three or four? Yes, we'll start at page three, and then it goes on for several pages on the capital needs. And I will tell council, I've had to talk with a couple of you about that, uh, we're working through a process with, uh, potentially leasing out vehicles that are one ton and under, or under one ton. And for Austin, uh, Ron, under one ton or one ton and under? Oh, he's over there, okay. And so, um, the current plan right now is all vehicles under that weight capacity is gonna, or we're gonna remove them from the capital. And so we can get to an actual plan on replacement leasing, so we're actually turning them over because not in, not just in police, we do have one beautiful Crown Vic that has a lot of, um, history and metal showing underneath the paint. Uh, but we also have several vehicles that are mid, early nineties, late nineties that, uh, we need to work on replacing. We need to get a, a better plan on to do that. And so when you get into capital budgets, usually the first thing is cuts vehicles. And so we're gonna look at a plan that we can do to adequately replace those and keep them in a rotation and keep a, a budget line item that's gonna be close, close, as close to fixed as possible, uh, going forward. So just to let you all know about that, that all those will be removed, so we can work on that plan for leasing. There we go, capital starts on page three, just gave the long intro to that again. Pink tab.
Pink tabs.
Pink tabs.
How many vehicles are we looking at? I mean, I see that, well, it says quantity and, so there's twenty-five under on page six, is that, that's a lot of vehicles.
Patrol.
Yeah. So totaled, I mean, I guess I can do the math, but just curious.
I think outside of patrol, there's ten or eleven.
Okay.
And they, they vary on costs because of the equipment involved, as patrol vehicle, uh, car as opposed to administrative or investigative, uh, assigned car.
Yeah, once, once Ron and Austin work through that, then as we get more concrete numbers and proposals, then obviously we'll bring that through all, not just when it's time to vote, we'll, we'll work through that. It'll be part of some work sessions before we get to that, uh, final proposal.
So it's basically everything except vehicles?
Yes.
Have we ever talked about maybe doing away with a helicopter and then using drones or something that would be less expensive to maintain?
Um, we have, uh, there's, there's two, and we're actually are in the middle of, uh, of speaking to a lot of vendors about, uh, drones. The, the federal law changed about the drones that, uh, law enforcement can use and what they have to have and specification of things, and so we're, we're, we're looking at, uh, basically an agreement with a vendor where we can get a drone a year for so many years and, and, and stock that type of fleet. The aviation, um, uh, unit, helicopters are, uh, they're a vital asset. And, and not only just us, but, uh, to the district. There's a lot of, uh, requests, uh, for, for use of the, the helicopter for looking for Alzheimer's patients that have walked away, or, uh, suspects that have, you know, left a, ran from a pursuit or something and are in the woods or those types of things, missing children. Uh, they're, they're a vital asset, uh, for, uh, for law enforcement in this area. And so it's not just being you guys, a lot of that, the, the, the actual helicopter itself is free. We get those free from the government, uh, from the military. And so the only cost really is our, our fuel, and right now we're doing some training with a second pilot. So that will be, uh, some of the expense, and then just parts. And then a lot of things that are in the, like, this past fiscal year's, uh, budget, we had an engine overhaul because they can only fly so many hours and, you know, hundreds of hours. And then after that, we have to do a replacement of the engine, but, um, that's the cost usually.
I think Councilman, the biggest downfall that I found when I asked this question a few years ago was time. Um, and we're just, with the technology and the batteries today for drones are just not there yet. They're at forty-five minutes, maybe an hour. And so, you know, our, our helicopters up there, obviously more than an hour at a time. And so that's where the, the downfall is, having to employ those and having enough drones to cover that. And if you have a helicopter going out, you gotta have a base near for the drone to come back. And it's just, we're just not there in the technology yet.
Another part of the, the helicopter, it's, it's in our, our pursuit policy. If, if the helicopter's up, then, uh, the helicopter takes on the pursuit and it reduces the liability for us in chasing with, with a, with a vehicle. So, uh, they take charge of the pursuit, and so we back off and then reduces risk and liability. So there's a lot of, a lot of parts to that.
Councilmember Wallace has a question.
Yes, sir, thank you, Chief Corley, going back to the cameras?
Yes.
Um, I understand that we could have to have people to be able to monitor it on a right then basis, looking at it currently. But I, I just want you to kind of look at it, because if we did have the camera, the cameras in some of those high-risk areas, even if you just had the video of it, could that not help you solve something when you don't have people that will call in and report crime so they don't wanna say anything? It's just, I'm just thinking through that, wondering if that could help the process.
Yes, uh, the camera, the recording of the, what the camera sees can be used, uh, for us to investigate, uh, in a capacity like that. And we have done that, uh, obviously, uh, and just like, uh, my camera, uh, and the video perspective has, has been beneficial. So yes, we, we could use the recording.
Thank you.
Just one quick thing, repair costs to the cars and vehicles that you have, uh, does the city have any house mechanics to take care of that? Or do we outsource all the, the?
No, uh, the only things we really outsource is if it's damaged or if it's outside of warranty. I mean, a, a lot of, a lot of stuff is done inside, if it's inside of warranty, they go out. But if, uh, we do have mechanics at the city garage, and we actually had, uh, we have some, uh, folks inside our public safety garage that do some of the minor work, but, uh, yes.
Thank you.
Are you got any questions for police? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
You don't wanna ask too many questions when he's got a whole army backing him up out there. A bunch of bad hombres.
Next up is fire department, and that is on page twenty in yellow tab, expense report.
Morning.
Good morning.
Be a little more comfortable up here, I had a bunch of guns behind me. So, uh, we're, we're gonna start out with our, our, uh, budget that we're proposing. And this is everything minus, uh, salaries, so basically our operating.
Twenty-one, I'm sorry, yeah, very bottom of twenty, vocal that goes into page twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Basically our operating budget, uh, what helps us keep the lights on, uh, fuels of fueling trucks, uh, things like that. We, uh, we actually are very close to where we were at last year, I think, which is the ten thousand dollars. So that, that, uh, budget to help us keep the lights on and everything is roughly about five point four percent of our overall budget.
Chief, I ask the same question to every department, uh, is there a, a critical need in your department? Critical need that is not reflected in this budget?
There, uh, we would like to get up to full staffing, absolutely. Uh, we've, over the last two months, we've had six people to leave, take jobs, uh, at other departments. Um, one just got out of fire service altogether. And, uh, we're seeing where our firefighters are actually starting to look at other options out there. And, uh, as I said, in the past, uh, two months, I believe, we've had six of them leave. So right now we have about a total of eighteen vacancies.
Chief, where are we at with, uh, pay for firefighters?
Firefighters were comparable, but where we're starting to run into issues is when somebody has a paramedic license or in advanced DMT license on top of their firefighting, uh, that's where we're not being competitive.
Do they go to ambulance service?
So some of your other cities, what they're doing is they're paying, straight out of the gate, they're paying them, uh, seventy-one thousand dollars. We don't have a different, uh, position, say for a firefighter, paramedic. The route that we went last year, uh, was we decided to give them a stipend. So if you hold a, a paramedic license, you would, you would get a stipend throughout the year, uh, in order to, you know, provide some, some compensation for, uh, holding that license. As we move forward, you know, one thing that I do wanna point out is that we're not, you know, everybody says fire department, but there is a lot more that goes into, uh, uh, being a firefighter these days. Seventy, about seventy-five percent of our calls are, are medical calls. And so, uh, us being first responders, being first on scene, uh, being able to provide that life-saving care to, uh, to our citizens is essential. And, uh, it's, it's grown into, uh, being a very positive program for us, uh, and we're saving lives by doing them.
You know, you bring that up, last year I had, uh, inquire about the efficacy of sending a fire truck to, to a site that doesn't need a fire truck, it needs something smaller, and I think you said you were gonna work on that. What's, what's the deal on that?
We, uh, were able to do that on occasion, uh, but generally, uh, what we're, we do is we will send an engine and we have a paramedic that is staffs the unit by themselves. And that paramedic responds with the engine to be able to provide that higher level of care. Uh, last year when we presented the, uh, the budget, our capital budget that has since been rolled into, uh, the bond issue, uh, we asked for four vehicles. And what we were planning on doing with those vehicles is replacing our battalion chiefs' vehicles, then passing what they're currently driving down to use as squad vehicles where we could staff them up. Send out two people rather than sending out a whole complement of, you know, fire engine and three people. We're trying to do, uh, use our, our folks wisely, uh, and partly due to, uh, to staffing, we're not able to do that right.
So right now the engine is still going out?
Yes.
You mentioned seventeen, I think you said seventeen firefighters that you need?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, and you said that's critical?
Yes.
How, how much would that be additional to your, the budget if that was staffed? Prox.
Roughly around, uh, eight hundred thousand.
What's our, what's our starting pay?
Our starting pay for a firefighter is forty-six eight oh one.
And, and you said that other cities are around seventy?
Some are, some are paying, some are paying as high as that, uh, and that's for a firefighter, paramedic. Don't get, don't get, you know, we don't wanna get those two.
Right, right.
Mixed up, but, uh, uh, the, when we did our pay study several years ago, uh, it, it put us at the top. And, uh, and then other cities started doing pay studies, and, and, you know, it was a, kind of turned into a competition, honestly. To see who could pay them. And, uh, in the fire service, we don't have a lot of people knocking down our doors to come and join, uh, talk. You have to have, uh, a passion to serve, uh, they're away from their families for twenty-four hours at a time. And, uh, and it's quite an adjustment from civilian life. So, uh, we, we look for folks that can fit in, uh, and, and really have that passion. So we don't lower our standards just because we have a need. But what we have been doing recently, uh, in, in, is, uh, we started a, a major recruiting effort, uh, where we started targeting some of the local schools, some of the local colleges. And, uh, it, about a year ago, when we tried to recruit, we would have. we would have thirty people show up. Half of those people would pass our physical test, and then another half would pass a written test. So we would end up with about five, six people that we could hire. And we really ramped up our efforts to hire and do a lot of recruiting over the last three months. And by doing that, last month, we ended up with interviewing and approving a total of twelve people that we could potentially hire. Today, they're doing the physical agility test, which is about a month later from when we did it last time. And we have thirty-five people down there. So we've really improved on our recruiting efforts. It's showing, it's starting to pay off. And we're proud of the results that we're getting.
If seventy-five percent of your calls are in medical, do we not need to kind of reorganize the fire department so that there's a more focus on taking care of the medical without sending out all the fire people and equipment?
Yes, sir. That's what we would like to do, obviously. But when we, when we have shortages, you know, if we have, right now, we run three people. We should have four people on the engine. And we do have four people on our engines. But our ladder trucks are staffed right now with three people, where there should be four people on that. So our goal is to be able to take, when we have a full house, take one off of the engine and one off of the ladder and staff up a squad. That way, the squad can go out on the medical calls, keeps our engine and our ladder truck in service.
Forgive me for not knowing this, but we're doing, we're taking care of the medical portion of our community. Does the hospital system that owns the ambulance service, do they not have enough there that causes us to have to do that?
They do. They, they actually, when this started back during COVID, everybody was hurt and everybody was running. And a lot. But since then, we've tweaked our program. Med Center EMS does a great job. Where we're actually a very added benefit to the community is we have fire stations that are located in these communities. So if somebody goes into cardiac arrest, heart attack, whatever, our average time that we can get to the patient is within four minutes. Whereas the ambulance may have a more of an extended ETA because they're not located throughout the community the way that we are.
Right.
So that's, that's the benefit. We're able to get a higher level of care to our citizens quicker and be able to mitigate whatever emergency that they may have going on at that time.
Councilmember Wallace has a question.
Thank you. Good morning, Chief Friedle. Good morning. As we were speaking to police chief, he had five officers that what I call, we put a bookmark in for those officers when they're hired. Four were retiring. Have you put in a bookmark for any additional firemen?
We have seven.
Did you say yes? I couldn't hear you.
He said yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Because we just want to be supportive of you two, of course. And then hopefully, you said there was so much of a process, it was so hard to find. Hopefully, when you do find additional hires, that we'll have the funds for that. So I just want to make sure you've got what you need. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question along with that. You had seven that is in the budget currently, correct? So if you have get up to staff eighteen, you know, that you need, and this might be a question for Mr. Mayor, like, how would we, like, be able to staff those other ones? Are we going to be able to move money around or?
That's a great question. And we've talked about this with both chiefs. In the past, we've planned for full employment. But the reality is with recruiting and time that we just never get there.
Right.
And so we have a number in there now. And if they get to that number, I will be more than happy to come and ask.
Thank you.
To budget for two hundred and twenty-one officers, to budget for seventeen vacant firefighters, when realistically, through training and through hiring process, we won't get there in a year.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that you felt good about if we get to that capacity, that we as council understand the need and that we can do a budget amendment to make sure that's done.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
And as mayor.
That's good.
And we feel like we're making improvements. We're trying to get back up to full staff.
Make sure I understand, right now, we need people in the budget, we have seven of those, and that's basically eleven, that are not funded.
Right.
One other quick thing here, but I'll get the wasted, but I'll do the pickup response time again. So that was just kind of going over. You know, that's a great number. I think it's already said again.
Yeah, well, our, the response time that we shoot for is four minutes. That's right. That's, that does come in perfectly. You know, I could sit here and I could go on and on about the fire department and the strides that they're making. And it's, it's not me, it's not Chief Turner, it's our firefighters that are actually doing it. We have a goal, when the, when the alarm goes off, that they're expected to be out the door within a minute. And that's regardless of what time of day or night that that call comes in. And then to be able to get out that door in a minute and get on scene in four minutes is astonishing. Just recently, I sent out an email to all of y'all about us receiving the class two again. Which a class two is the second highest rating that you can get as a fire department. And that in turn translates into lower insurance premiums for our citizens. So our guys and gals are doing a tremendous job.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to remind council and anyone else interested that our emergency services, they are also up against some mandatory retirement ages. So that one of the challenges in recruiting is not only to grow the number, but to replace what is required to leave at a certain time. So you're always chasing that will at the same time while trying to increase the overall capacity of the operations.
Do you know offhand how many are retiring this year?
We have about fifteen that are eligible. We're probably looking four to five by the end of the year. One thing about, you know, when we hire firefighters, it takes five months training. And we're doing, actually, now we're able to do all that training in-house. And I say, we've always done the fire training in-house and the, what we call an E M R level of training. But again, just recently, we've been approved to teach E M T class in-house, advanced E M T, and we're looking at paramedic. And that translates into cost savings, tremendous cost savings for the citizens and for the city, because we're able to do that in-house now. Jackson's one of only five cities in the state of Tennessee that's able to do that. So the improvements that we're doing, we're very conscious of, and grateful of the tax dollars that we're giving, and we use them very wisely.
Any more questions on operating? Pink tab, page eleven, is where the capital starts for fire department.
Fair, if I may, just one additional request that is above what we have asked for is we, we have our administrative assistant assist us with our budget. And she's retiring in July. And we would like to create a part-time position to be able to, so she can help us manage that budget, our spending, our costs, and our time tracking. And so we're going to be replacing her in July. And we would like to be able to retain her on a part-time basis.
How much would that run?
Roughly about thirty-six thousand.
Why didn't you put it in?
He did. We're still working through part-time positions. There's several, there are several departments that don't have a part-time position put in yet, and we're still working on that. Capital starts on page eleven, pink tab. Do you want to run through that? Because a lot of that stuff is words that they may not see on a regular basis.
Our capital this year is, we've been asked to prepare a budget. And we did prepare a budget that is going to get us through the year. We understand that it is a tight budget year. So what we've asked for our items that we definitely need, like our turnout year, every year, turnout year, we have to incorporate that and replace it. And it's good for ten years. So this year, we have a significant number of turnout year that needs to be replaced. And so that's what the majority of our capital budget is.
Is that for five nine?
No.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Firefighter coach, crowd nurse, yeah, jacket on.
That's on page eleven.
But we have seven fire stations and administrative, three other fire stations, station two, one month, four, built roughly around nineteen seventy-seven. You see how well I aged in that period of time? Our fire stations have done better than me. So we have continuous maintenance issues that we have to address. And we try to stay on top of it as best that we can. But we do have a lot of things that was up. So, you know, a fire station is more than just a building, it's actually a home to do to our fire crews. And making sure that they're updated, maintained is a goal of both Chief Turner and myself to make sure that they have adequate places to stay.
By no means am I an expert on maintenance. We've talked to Colonel about that, but fifty thousand, that seems, that probably won't go very far. We're talking about roofs and other high-dollar repairs. Is fifty thousand enough to keep things comfortable?
Fifty thousand is, you know, again, we've been asked to provide the type of budget. So yes, fifty thousand, I think that we can, we can do it. But we have to keep in mind that if we have a major repair that happens, an A C unit goes down or something pops up that we haven't planned for, then we would be asking for some more funds. I don't believe in coming back and asking for more funds. And I also don't believe in preparing a budget that has money stored aside. So the fifty thousand right now is going to help us address our most pressing needs. We have some other opportunities that are coming into play. We're looking at community support and partnerships, which has turned out to be very good for us. And, you know, so to answer your question, I would say right now, for what we have, that number is adequate.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I lost you all for a few minutes. So if this question was asked, forgive me. But with the growth and the hope of Great Wolf Lodge, and talking about as you were just saying, planning, do we need to be planning or preparing for an additional fire station, possibly at around Great Wolf Lodge?
Yes, that's something that we have been talking about for the last couple of years. And we definitely, as growth continues to come into our city, that is an area that we feel like we would need a fire station. We've been told just from other fire departments that have a resort similar to Great Wolf Lodge, that their call volume has increased. And so we're expecting the same. So yes, we will be planning for an additional fire station in the future. And also, when it comes to putting that fire station in, we're probably going to be asking for another fire apparatus to go into that station along with another complement of firefighters, which would be twelve additional firefighters.
Thank you.
Chief, could you elaborate a little bit on the leasing program that you put in a few years ago and how successful that's been?
Yeah, so it's been about three, three, four years. What we did is, we had a real urgent need to replace seven of our fire apparatus. The apparatus had about a hundred and thirty-some miles, a hundred and thirty thousand miles, a hundred and fifty thousand miles.
One of the firefighters had to keep the door closed.
Yeah.
Physically, when they were going out.
Yeah, window issues, the whole nine yards. And it was costing us roughly about three hundred thousand dollars to maintain those units. We got together and we priced fire apparatus at that time. And then we also worked with the distributor. And we were able to get seven pieces of fire equipment in here. Roughly, I think it was around six million dollars. And we financed those units for a period of ten years. And I got thinking, I mean, it was perfect timing because right now, if we were to replace the equipment that we replaced back three, four years ago, we were looking at doubling that price tag at the bare minimum.
So we've got, how many more years of life out of those, say, one?
They're good for twenty-five years, at least.
Is there anything we need to look at like that right now? Any equipment?
We will have, you know, we will be bringing forth a, one of our ladder trucks has got about two more years of life in it. And so in two years, we're going to be asking for another ladder truck.
How much ladder truck, three hundred thousand?
Try about two million.
Two million?
And we were able to get them for about one point two five.
I think that'll work, chief. Around, they'll be around the same time we're looking at a new station in Great Wolf Lodge area. So that can probably, we're looking at three new apparatus for that station in place that we're working into a package at that time. Any other questions for Chief Friedle? If you have any question for Chief Turner, please ask those two.
I have a Nathan question. I'd like to have a total, like we talked about the police department.
I just sent you the police on your, on your cell phone.
I cannot use my cell phone. I have to compromise seriously. Never mind. Hopefully, be there when I get there. I have to compromise bank accounts, brokerage accounts, cell phone.
Chief, thank you for what you do. Just having been a heart patient, having our entire city four minutes away from you saving a life is remarkable for our city. I don't think most people understand how important that is. But thank you for making that possible.
Thank you. I appreciate you mentioning it. But I will say that actually, being able to serve citizens in Jackson, and this is a sentiment of all Jackson firefighters, it's actually our pleasure.
Thank you.
You give me a moment of privilege. Working with the police and fire this year, they were incredibly engaged in this budgeting process. And we, everybody was a pleasure to work with. But as much as they're dealing with, it was, it went very well. And I appreciate, appreciate all of y'all.
I wouldn't go say that.
Yeah, man, these two, you know, departments, Central District, over a third of our total budget is there to provide those necessary services. Absolutely. Any other questions for our chiefs?
Well, Chief Corley, I'm just curious now, in light of this four-minute response rate, what's your average?
Very, very much lower than that. We're already out of.
We're already out on the street. And so, you know, we're 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 actually in the neighborhood, so most of our response times are less than a minute.
What I love about our police and fire department, they have a very healthy level of healthy competition, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next up, we had Central Dispatch yesterday, we got groundskeeping. And their operating budgets in yellow tab, expense reports starts on page thirty-two. N R C took over last January. And I hope that everyone has had an opportunity to visit our parks and see around on what they're responsible for and see the marked improvement of of the care that has been taken in in all the areas of our ground. So, you know, they've done a great job. Any questions for R C on operating or comments or?
Yes, same question for you. Anything critical need in your department that's not reflected in this budget that's been presented to us?
The only thing is probably with all departments vehicles. As far as going into that lease program, it will make sense. I have a lot of stuff from ninety-five to two thousand model trucks that, you know, we might do what we have. We're we can make through this next year what we have, but, you know, in the future, vehicles are my concern.
But for this next this next fiscal year coming, you can make it with what you got.
Yes, sir.
So there's not a critical need.
That's how you want to look at it. I mean, y'all are more welcome to come out to my shop.
Y'all want to look at it as though, you know, you can't you can't make it unless you have something that's not in the budget. That's the way.
I can make it this next year what I.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Don't you have that old school F one fifty?
I have several of them, several S tens, Ford Rangers. They're pretty much obsolete. We we use them. I mean, like I said, we've been asked this next year is going to be pretty tight on budgeting. And we can make do with what we have for one more year.
I was gonna say, is are the vehicles that you have, are they at a point where they could break down? And it's going to be more to fix them than to get an actual new vehicle or a fairly new vehicle? I see Austin back there. I mean, so it's 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 a reasonable question.
At the level of need that we have across departments, that's why we're going to the lease program because there's multiple vehicles across multiple departments that are in that area.
Okay.
I mean, they've got our value out of them. And we still, everything still runs. I mean, our garage works with us by mechanic. We've spent some more money this year on fixing stuff that hasn't been used in several years and that we are using now. So the the vehicles are, they're past, you know, due. But like I said, we still may do what we have and to make it another year, we'll be fine. We've made it through this year. Like I like I said, just came into it this year, kind of seeing what all we do have that runs, doesn't run. We've got ninety-nine percent of everything running that we, you know, could be utilized, so we're utilized.
Do you guys have any part-time staff that you?
The only part-time staff we have would be at the sportsplex, just for our summer help. But groundskeeping, no, it's all.
And the sportsplex, the summer help, is that budgeted yet?
That is, that is with Jason.
Okay. Where's Jason? Okay.
But yes, I mean, everything's all.
Okay.
Tagging on Jason's part here, last year, y'all assumed some of the duties of groundskeeping.
I do all.
Okay. How much was that addition?
As far as?
The sportsplex?
I was over the sportsplex, now I have groundskeeping.
I understand that, how much, what was that dollar number that got moved there?
From the sportsplex?
Yes.
I want to say like ninety-three thousand dollars.
Okay. The groundskeeping in two thousand four was two point four million. And we're budgeting in last, we're budgeting three point two million. So that's about eight hundred thousand, I believe.
Looking at the pay.
I'm looking. Yeah, forty-four actual, I guess that came with all it, two point four million. And budgeted three point two million, so eight hundred thousand.
And that's essentially the twenty-four number to the projected twenty-six number?
Yeah, yeah, two years.
Well, I was curious about that too, I mean, just being nosey more than anything else. Because, yeah, it's it's a fairly significant increase. And yes, obviously some of it was migrating out of sportsplex budget to groundskeeping.
Two major items that are, so we contracted landscaping out two years ago. And so that that item reflected in there of our landscaping budget. And then Riverside Cemetery was also contracted out and now is taken care of in-house.
R C, I've got a question. Forgive me if this hurts your feelings a little bit, with the the future of turf at the sportsplex. How will that impact the duties responsibilities of your team?
As far as maintenance?
Yeah, because I mean, because don't y'all take care of the dirt and then, you know, you got the infills now too. With that being taken off of you and the turf being added, how does that affect you?
That's what everybody thinks, that just because you're going to turf, there's no maintenance to it. There's still maintenance to it every day. What I will be doing is taking a lot of the funds for not buying conditioner, which is say ten thousand dollars a year in conditioner and taking that and putting it toward other parks. You've got to understand, groundskeeping had, I think, forty thousand dollars pretty much for all the parks. So I've taken the ninety-three and the forty to try to utilize. And not not just all the parks, this is City Hall, this is the Carnegie, this is the fairgrounds. This is everything the city has, all the police, fire departments, everything. And then so.
Everything in groups.
Yeah. So I don't, I mean, I didn't really ask for anything in addition. The pay and everything, I think that's what you're looking at as far as the differences in some of the stuff. I will say the overtime, mayor sent out, all of my overtime is due to helping other departments. I guess helping the fairgrounds, the civic center, that amp. So that's where the overtime comes from. It's not from groundskeeping, it's helping other departments, so.
I don't know, I will say, R C, something that I'm soccer dad and those J S C tournaments at North Park. The grass is getting better and better each tournament, so I appreciate y'all working out there and.
Well, that's what we're working on right now, trying to get everything ready for the state games, which is three, four weeks away. So really kind of, you know, using more of the resources I have with the sportsplex, like I said, on those other parks that really has just hadn't had much done to them in a while, so.
One comment, what you do helps our city look better. And and that's an impression someone coming to our city. What you do makes a positive impression on them, so thank you.
I think, I mean, we, I mean, our guys, they work hard. Helping other departments, just for instance, yesterday, we helped go and pick up trash in different long roadways, you know. So our guys are, they do a little bit of everything. And they don't never bat an eye when I ask them to go do something. So I'm fully staffed, I don't need anybody else. So I feel, I mean, I really feel like doing what we need to do and I'm being as responsible as I can be with the budget.
Don't make clear, my question is not about you or what you, how you run an apartment. Because like Frank said, the city looks beautiful and that is what people look at. But I would like, if if I could get Nathan to kind of figure that hundred thousand dollars and get the highest numbers, not right now. The mayor said the cemetery Riverside was wanting, not to the penny, but roughly worth of that eight hundred thousand. How was it reallocated is the right word for it.
Yeah, no capital in there. Any other questions for R C? Guy had been out to some of our city parks here late at night, so they are looking very, very good. All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Going on to public works, y'all have subdepartments underneath there. And so got Austin here and if you have questions, public work starts on twenty-seven. And then see the the numbers where the departments start on there. Streets twenty-nine, obviously, so you're looking at all that. And then we got solid waste fund, that's what tab is solid waste fund, Nathan, what color is that?
Carina, thanks. Now, excuse me.
Uh, red?
It's red, I'm sorry, one thirty-one is red.
Yeah, solid waste fund, so health and sanitation, three one one, Jackson Beautiful are all in the red tab under the solid waste fund. The rest of that, you can see the page numbers.
Health and sanitation and real water and red tab.
Look, I have a question that I got to ask everybody else, because I have a different variation of it than you. Since so many departments, so many of you. All of these departments that are listed, these stuff departments, they have a, lack of a better word, do they have a boss that runs each of these departments?
There's a department head.
Okay, so my question to you is this, the budget that's been submitted to us, is there any requests that a department head has made to you that is not presented in this budget that they feel is critically needed?
I don't think so.
All right, and then after they've submitted everything to you, is there anything in your budget that you feel anything in your office, whether that you feel is critical, that's not included? Thank you very much.
I think it too, I think two major differences that I saw going there. These budgets were, one was in the street department. You look at these operating supplies, right, there's an additional half a billion dollars in there. And that's for the purchase of asphalt for our in-house paving crew. And that's out startup this summer. And then in health and sanitation, I think it's contractual services, maybe additional hundred thousand dollars. Professional services, contractual services, one of those. And that is a cooperative with our sheriff's department to have a litter crew that's specifically designated for us that we can send out to five days a week, eight hours a day. And that's to pay for transportation, ankle monitors and an officer to monitor the inmates as they're doing that. So we can give them specific streets daily and they go into the high litter areas and work on that. So it'd be, like I said, five days a week, eight hours a day of litter crew cleaning up every day.
Then repeat that last part you said about litter as well.
So this is a, this is actually an all-female litter crew that's that are currently housed at our criminal justice complex. And this, the money is to pay for transportation, ankle monitors and for a sheriff's deputy to monitor the litter crew five days a week, eight hours a day, picking up litter.
And you got to feed them too.
Yeah, I think they're they're feeding them, we're just paying for the deputy, the transportation and the equipment for them to to pick up the litter.
That's that's the name, right?
First female litter crew that I think the sheriff's department's done, that we've done, yeah.
Yeah, it's good.
Now, who's heading that, who's the person that decides where they're going?
Now, that would be us. We will do, keep Jackson beautiful through our litter index, with parks and great, keep Jackson beautiful. And then through through citizens awareness and letting us know where the litter needs to be picked up, we can send them in areas every day.
So within the citizen, for lack of a better phrase, whose baby is this, keep Jackson beautiful?
Uh, I'm gonna say it's Austin's.
I may delegate some more.
All right.
The last survey.
I've got a question.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the last survey you did, that's not you, but the last group.
Did you call on me, Scott, Mr. Mayor? Okay, thank you. Good morning, Austin. Talking about the traffic lights and the eagle eye cameras, how are we doing on replacing them? And do you perceive that you need a few more maybe in the next year or two? Thank you.
Yes. There are some funds once we get to that. That's definitely a significant amount. We're talking about inner-city streets, that's a significant amount of streets. I think that's enough, an adequate amount for us to, first of all, most of the employees that have a lot of experience and stuff, we obviously need to bring up speed. And I think that'll get our big win, get us some experience in it next year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is not really a cost-saving decision to get to the problems quickly.
Right, well, that was the issue we had last year, so that we can pay for our own bikes.
I know I've talked to you a couple of times about cleanliness and bypass in our major streets and highways. Are you adequately funded so that we can get that on a routine to where, like the bypass so highly traveled that it always looks neat and clean? I know you have to be there off-hours.
We are, and we just do a better job, Scott.
I think as we look forward to, Councilman, when we look at our, a lot of that litter that we see on the bypass are trucks heading toward the landfill, not from Jackson but from other areas. And I think the landfill is anticipating some reduction in that traffic over the next few years. And so and we're periodically have, Chief Floyd's gone, we have an officer out there making sure that those trucks are tarp and they're covered. And so we're working on kind of both levels of cleaning the litter up and then also enforcing those that are not abided by the order. Get their trucks up and covered in beds, so to make sure they're still below.
Thank you.
So you got, I got street departments on twenty-nine, that's a three-on-one solid waste, traffic signs twenty-six, signalizations twenty-six, stormwater twenty-five, and city garage is thirty-one. That's a lot of departments under Austin's leadership, so y'all can, I don't want to dictate which one to ask. So if there are questions in particular, just make note which department you're asking the question for. And then we can get the, if Austin can't answer, we'll get that department head up there, I think they're all present.
Again, just being nosey, street department, they've got a pretty significant jump in overtime salaries. What's the, what's the reason behind that?
Well, it's not necessarily lack of schedule or so, it was just emergency situations, all of our rain events. We average that on a daily or an annual basis.
We expense that out and then in majority of the situations, Councilman, we get that reimbursed when disaster declared. And so it's a, it's, we expense it and then we wait for the reimbursement thing. So we've got a lot of rain since this spring, as we see the increase of that.
I was also curious about, because y'all did the expansion projects, hitting parks and Highland and Bad Drive, doing those larger cuts and resurfaced areas. And you had to do a lot of that at night.
We did.
So is that factored in as well?
It is, yes, sir.
Three one one call, could you give me a little bit of history of what all we combined, what all the equipment we've got, where we're on that project?
No equipment besides phones and computers.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, no equipment besides phones and computers. That's one, one room in a building we already had with four cubicles set up and four employees. Cost is salaries and benefits. At what, what minimal cost of will our equipment, computers?
Four employees, and they were four employees before they started.
Yes, they were consolidated from other departments.
So then we just got a lot better service.
Correct.
Correct.
And we'll continue, we'll get better service, I think this fall, early spring, maybe we'll move. And we talked about this of the, uh, right now, we're wasting probably seven hours, eight hours a day collectively of our employees in 301, inputting that into multiple work order systems. So, once we consolidate that, we'll be even more efficient and effective.
And that will happen with?
It's, it's, at the rate of Tyler Meehan's.
That's got to figure that. But that's a great service to have, to be able to, that, that turned in. Austin, I'm just glad you're here, appreciate the job you do, and you always return my phone call, even though I sometimes call too late.
Yeah, I want to say kudos on that, too, we appreciate you very much.
Let me add an amendment to you, street. Learn about the street sweeping, and I called your, the office, and they got somebody over there right quick, because the street department head did that, and I want to appreciate you, and appreciate Mr. Jones, I believe he was the one that did that. Uh, so thank you so much for that.
Can we do that very often through the neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think there's, there's nothing that'll land us, there's, I think, a side mower, side cutting mower for street, and then some, just trying to find it, yeah, I did, page we start on there. Uh, yeah, equipment, side cutter mower, so the trucks coming out, um, yeah, I think that might be it. Because the majority of what we're getting for our public works is in the bond issue, so. Yeah, any additional questions for Austin, or any of the department heads that are here under his leadership?
I have a bit of a question about health and sanitation, probably better for a Chris question, whoever wants to pull with it. I have, uh, I've seen a good response to those who have scheduled the claw pickups, uh, however, perusing some of the, uh, some of the public comments you see on social media, uh, there's still a lot of people who aren't familiar with the, uh, the new on-demand request system for the claw trucks. So, is, um, is there a need for continued outreach there, uh, continued PR, just trying to make everyone aware that this is now how the claw truck operates?
It is, and we only have one person, but. It is, we have one person, he can only do so much, but he's going around at people that are not scheduling, he's leaving them a door hanger, explaining the process. We're also, as people are reporting files, we're in turn mailing out a letter to that address with the guidelines for scheduling.
I was just curious, because obviously this is a time of year where, I'll get back to, normally, I mean, it's, you know, day or two, and the truck's there, but right now, it's pushing out about a week, so, um, again, this is just me being curious, being a little nosy, uh, but if there's some way we can, you know, increase public education in that regard, especially this time of year, I'd certainly like for us to consider that.
We'll definitely look into that.
Have we had any updated numbers, how much money we save by having 311 versus a truck driving around the day with it?
Uh, I think we, so last year's numbers from 23 to 24 were right at 20, it's 19,813, I think is what the number was. Um, and then, so once we close this year out, then we'll have those numbers of what we save.
I have a question I wanted to ask you, Chris, but I, I think, uh, in light of, uh, the comments yesterday, that we were going to have a big discussion about all this trash and stuff sometime soon, is that right, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll just defer to that. When you say sometime soon, Mayor, you're talking about how soon?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about before the end of the fiscal year, so we want to get through, get through this budget, and then we'll work on the policy stuff, so, probably in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you.
Great job, Austin, and your team.
That's all the departments.
I was going to say, thank you.
We have really great city police.
Yeah, we do.
We really do.
We do. All right, so anything else for Public Works, any departments underneath Public Works?
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Y'all and I will take a quick five-minute break, we'll come back with maintenance and Parks and Rec, and we'll be here soon.